Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of July 24, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, and whether they are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting on Monday, July 24, 2023 is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairperson Beckus, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be back down here to award the Mayor's Award of Excellence for April of 2023. We are presenting this award to Sergeant Tu Tran of the Lincoln Police Department. You may remember this made the news, but Sergeant Tran was nominated by Lincoln Police Captain, sorry, Southeast Team Captain Mike Woolman in the category of Valor for his selfless efforts in February to rescue a motorist whose vehicle had slid into a pond. And after responding to a rescue alarm call near 14th and Yankee Hill Road, Sergeant Tran encountered a nearly fully submerged sedan with only a small portion of the vehicle's trunk and rear window still visible. And despite a four-degree wind chill, Sergeant Tran quickly removed his duty belt and ballistic vest and swam to the sinking vehicle in the middle of the frigid pond. Remember, this is February. And unable to see in the murky water, Tran entered the car through the driver's side rear door, found the still-conscious driver in the backseat, extracted her, and pulled her to the shore. And by then bystanders had called 911, and the vehicle disappeared from view. Lincoln Fire and Rescue transported the woman to the hospital where she was treated for hypothermia and then released. Needing no medical assistance, unless the blankets provided by LFR count as a treatment, Tran went home, changed into a dry uniform, and returned to finish his shift. As Captain Woolman noted in his nomination letter, Sergeant Transactions did not come as a surprise. This was his second water rescue in six months. Captain Woolman went on to thank Sergeant Tran for his, quote, "leadership," his selfless dedication to the department, and his service to the city, unquote. I hope you will echo that sentiment, and please join me in congratulating Sergeant Tu Tran for his alertness, his bravery, and selflessness to rescue a community member in peril. And at this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium Chief Michonne Morrow to say a few more words.
Good afternoon, council. It is my pleasure and honor to be here in front of you today. I want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to lift up one of our amazing members of the Lincoln Police Department team and mayor for your wonderful summary of the Mayor's Award of Excellent for Sergeant Tu Tran. There's really very little left for me to say of what an incredible staff member we have in Sergeant Tran. This exemplifies his 13-year career with the Lincoln Police Department. His personnel file is full of accolades, and this is another one to add to it. What I want to bring forward, in addition to what was previously summarized and shared, is this was self-initiated, and this really speaks to the expectation that he far exceeds for the Lincoln Police Department. He was going to a different event that day, but was listening to his radio, understanding what was happening in his community, and he heard this call come out and understood that he was close and could respond, and ultimately finds himself as the first one there. Without hesitation, he takes action and saves a community member's life, and I am beyond proud. It makes me a little emotional because I get pretty proud of the work that is done by the Lincoln Police Department. I also want to thank his family, who, for the support that you provide him. We know full well in law enforcement that we don't do it alone. We do it with our team at the Lincoln Police Department and always the support of our family. So, again, thank you. It is a pleasure to work with you and have you as a part of our team at the Lincoln Police Department.
Thank you, Chief.
Words, and maybe introduce your family?
Yeah, so I have here my wife, Koo, my oldest daughter, Haan, Nam, and then Ni, and then awesome boy here, Kang. I just want to say thanks to the mayor, all the chiefs, and everyone that, you know, reached out to see how I was doing. I was pretty cold that night. Special thanks to Captain Woolman because he made me stay in my office for several hours to warm up, and that helped with my recovery. So, I was very grateful for what he did and everyone else, too. Thank you again. Honored and very humbled for this. Thank you.
Very good.
Well, thank you. We'll go take some pictures outside, but thank you for providing this forum, and thank you to the family as well for supporting his service.
We should have toddlers come every Monday. And puppies.
All right, Madam Clerk, whenever you are ready.
Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, Sections 1 through 3.
Is there anyone here who would like to testify on Items 1, 2, or 3 on the consent agenda? Anyone here to testify on Items 1, 2, or 3 on the consent agenda? Yes, please, come forward.
Made it up here. Terry Pope Gonzalez, P-O-P-E-g-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z, founder, South Salt Creek Area Neighborhood Association, established in 2010. Now, the best-kept-a-secret. Wow, you ever been there? The best-kept-a-secret. Actually, the best-kept-secret in the town is the man that just walked out of here, Sergeant Tran. So, now, because I don't have time to be here, because we're not going to have the paramedic unit show up here, so here's what we're going to do. We have a missing 14-year-old, so the best-kept-a-secret, let's see, is on 2737 North 49th Street. Well, I don't know where that's at. I can't find Omaha, Nebraska without going through seword. So, here's what we're going to do. I would vote yes, but see, I'm not in the voting position, and I don't know you guys, and I can't see you. I just know that you're different. And now, I know you, kind of, sort of, maybe. This one, kind of, sort of, maybe. I don't know you. Did you take over for Tammy Ward? Thank God she's gone, right? Now, this one here is Tom Beckus. I've been doing this for so long, Jerry Shookcraft. Talked to him yesterday. Is that right where you are? Now, I'm not real sure who was the wrong color that day. It was 1998, and Mrs. Gonzalez came before the Lincoln City Council. You know how far back it was? John Carlsen, Stronger, Safer Neighborhoods, right? Was on the Planning Commission. Then we have Sandra. Did I say that right? Sandra Washington. I'm not, I can't read yours. I'm not real sure who you are. I'm not real sure, and I don't need to know. Yes, and I don't need to know. Now, you need to know, I believe in term limits. Thank heavens for term limits, right? Because without term limits, we don't play politics. For a town that sacrifices its first responders, they sure having a monkey show, aren't they? I have to go for a pass out, okay? Now, trust me, I'm not in the best moods. Please come by the address. 349 South 1st Street, the homestead to the Gonzalez family, established in 1947. Please come by. And the health hazard in that neighborhood is that concrete company that the city council allowed to come 50 feet from that residential home. It is zoned residential, not industrial, like Johnson, Cindy Johnson, from the Lincoln City Council wanted it to be. It is not zoned industrial. Now, I don't happen to be, I'm mad, I'm mad at everybody. I promised you I would not get after you, didn't I? Not in public. Now, maybe you and I face-to-face, maybe, but not in public. I promised you I would not get after you, right? I promised you I would not get after you, and you, because you're a man, you went to check on the hog. The men that I know that ride a hog go to Sturgis once a year, and they don't have clean houses. Usually, the Harley-Davidson is in the front room. So, but I'm glad that you let the hog stay with the Marines. So, and you're not a doctor. I didn't know you were shrink. How come you didn't know I was having, I wasn't having a mental meltdown in February? I was having a massive stroke. How come none of you knew?
Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on Items 1, 2, or 3? All right, seen none, let's move on.
We can vote on these items. Item 1A is approving a professional services agreement supplement number 1 for environmental services between the City of Lincoln and Olson, Inc., for the Cornhusker Highway 39th to L-55X rehabilitation project introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion. Seen none, please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Showb.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving a professional service agreement supplement number 1 for preliminary engineering services between the City of Lincoln and Olson, Inc., for the Cornhusker Highway 39th to L-55X rehabilitation project introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion. Please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Showb.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Items 2A and 2B are introduced by Showb.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion. Seen none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Showb.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4 of Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. Also, as a reminder, we, clerks are asking that testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Speakers should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group. If you're speaking in favor, opposition, or neutral, clerks will also use a light system to help you aid timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided on both podiums. Both podiums are available for testimony as well, and green will indicate the start time for the testimony, yellow will indicate one minute remaining, and red will be your stop time. Item 4A, application of K-H-E-L-L-C doing business at Upside Bar and Lounge for the addition of a catering license to their Class I liquor license at 2801 Pine Lake Road, Suite H.
There are anyone here to speak on Item 4A, please come on down.
Swear you in, too, please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. If you could just start with your name and address, and then if you could just tell us a little bit about your application.
Elena Satell, and my home address, correct?
The business address is fine, too.
2801 Pine Lake Road, Suite H. And I'm an owner of there. I've been an owner for three years now, and done a few SDLs, and it kind of cost a little bit extra, so I figured might as well add the catering license. We continue to be asked to do these events because they go really well for us, so just kind of expanding the business, and that's about it. It's pretty simple.
Very good. Business expansion sounds good. Any questions for our applicant? Okay, thank you so much for coming down. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Madam Clerk, 4B.
Item 4B is manager application of Dale A. Donenhour for Walmart, Inc., doing business as Walmart Number 1943, located at 4700 North 27th Street.
Hello, welcome.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Dale Donenhour, Walmart, 1943, 4700 North 27th Street. I am here to be the responsible person for our liquor license. I've been with Walmart 24 years now. I held the license down at the 2500 Jamie Lane store for the last nine years, and I've just moved up to this store.
All right, very good. Any questions? All right, very good. Thanks for coming down. We appreciate it. Anyone else here who would like to speak on Item 4B? All right, let's move on to 4C.
Item 4C is manager application of Grace Blake for Blazing Wings, Inc., doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings, located at 1328 P Street.
Hello.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be? Thank you very much.
My name is Grace Blake. I've been the general manager at Buffalo Wild Wings off 1328 P Street for about a year, and I'm just looking to be added to the liquor license.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant before us? All right, seen none. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on Item 4C? Okay, seen none.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to speak on these items, I'd like to move approval of Item 4A through 4C.
Second.
Second, Washington. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Showb.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Okay, that concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is approving a license agreement between the City and Black Hills, Nebraska Gas, LLC, doing business as Black Hills Energy for a gas regulating station in Trendwood Park, generally located at 77th and Davies Drive.
Mr. Yost.
Good afternoon. J.J. Yost from Parks and Recreation. This is kind of a typical procedure for us to work with our local utility companies to, when possible, locate facilities that they need outside of the right-of-way in a park space if it's available, where it doesn't interfere with any type of park usage or active recreational space. So, in this case, at Trendwood Park, we have, excuse me, we have A Street to the north, and we're looking at locating the gas regulating station just on the east entrance off of 77th Street, and a little closer up of that area. The station is proposed for that upper northwest corner of the entry lot into the east side of the park, excuse me, west side of the park. This will be a 10-by-10 complex. It's a pipe-regulating system that comes up above ground, but when we locate it in a park like this, we ask that there be fence around it, black vinyl-clad fence that can screen it and prevent any climbing on the apparatus. So, this, again, is kind of our standard when we put it in a park. I believe we're looking at a 25-year here lease, a 25-year lease, which is very typical with our license agreements for utilities being located on park property, and the funding that they provide, the $200 a year, goes into our park landscape CIP, and then we use that at the park for, obviously, landscape improvement. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Sounds pretty standard. Questions for Mr. Yost? I guess Mr. Duden? Councilman Duden, you want to start?
Is this fenced in, or is this a building?
Fenced. Yeah, this would be a black vinyl-clad fence, chain-link fence with slats in it so that it's kind of opaque, but it is a fence.
Any other questions, councilman? Oh, councilwoman?
Good afternoon, J.J. Thanks for coming down. I had a couple of questions. One, I was reading the agreement and saw standby power generation, and is that fully within the fence as well?
Yes, everything goes within the 10-by-10 footprint.
Okay, and then are there any federal encumbrances? Is there any land and water dollars at this park?
At this park, there is not.
Oh, how lucky.
Yeah.
Okay, I think those are the rest of my questions.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions from counselors? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on Item 5A? Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Brandy Johnson on behalf of Black Hills Energy at 1731 Winhope Drive. And as you just heard from Mr. Yost, we have requested permission through this agreement with the Parks Department to relocate a gas regulator station. These are typically located within the right-of-way, and the current one is in the backyard of a neighboring home, and so identifying a better location for that, moving it slightly off the road of the right-of-way provides enhanced security and some safety as well. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Duden, you had asked about the fencing situation. I do have some examples of those we can share, but yes, they're fairly typically fenced in. There's different styles of fencing, and working with the Parks Department, we have agreed to provide the vinyl, black fencing, whereas others might be wider, various styles kind of to fit the neighborhood.
Any questions for your testifier?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on Item 5A? All right, seen none, let's move on to 5B.
Item 5B, miscellaneous 23005, application of the Director of Urban Development to declare the Industrial Avenue of Superior Street redevelopment area, generally located at the southwest corner of Industrial Avenue and Superior Street in north-central Lincoln as blighted and substandard.
Interim Director C.
Good afternoon. Tim C., Interim Urban Development Director, 555 South 10th Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, what you see on the screen here is a map of an area that is being proposed to be declared blighted and substandard within the city. As a point of reference, this is Superior Street on the north, 27th Street is here on the west side. This creek going through here is Salt Creek going through. This area was actually annexed into the city quite some time ago. Everything west of this line was annexed in 1967, to the east was annexed in 1979. So, 40-plus years ago, this has been sitting as vacant land within the city. Again, what's before you is a request to declare this area blighted and substandard so that we can use the tools listed in the community development law. What you will notice on the map is a lack of street infrastructure going through the site. Certainly, there are streets around it, but without streets going through it, it's difficult to develop. You'll also, it doesn't show up on here, but I can represent to you that with the Salt Creek going through here, you have a significant floodway going through here, as well as floodplain encumbering a significant portion of these sites. So, that is an additional challenge that adds to the difficulty in developing something like this, and is probably a significant reason why this has remained undeveloped for 40 years. The Hannah Kealan did a blight study, examined the factors listed in the community development law. I believe that's before you, and for you to review, they noted the presence of a number of those, having a strong presence within the area. I think the street layout, the floodplain are the two most obvious ones. And with that, we just ask the council to consider declaring this area to be blighted and substandard.
Questions for Mr. C.
Anybody interested in this property?
I don't know what all of the dealings are going up there in terms of buying or selling. I just know this is an area that has seen some interest, but when you start to dig into it, it becomes extremely challenging and expensive to develop it.
Other questions, councilman? Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. C.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on Item 5B? Welcome, Danae.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Calkowski, Seacrest and Calkowski Law Firm, appearing today on behalf of Kenny Holdings, and the answer is yes. Kenny Holdings has a purchase agreement to purchase 75 acres of this property. They run multiple manufacturing businesses here in Lincoln and some in Beatrice. Their desire is to expand and consolidate a manufacturing facility on this site, and as Tim mentioned, some of the challenges with this site, well, the beauty of it is it's I-1, right? And it's annexed, so another piece of I-1 in our city that we have somebody who wants to utilize. But the challenge is 33rd Street extends down to Superior but doesn't go south of Superior, and there are some challenges with the extension of that roadway because of the floodplain through the site. Multiple parties have tried to work on development of it and have not been successful, and I think this is going to be one thing that we need in order to be able to get over the hump and actually get somebody in there and using the property. It's a great site because of its location. We have bus service, we have the trail right next to it, we have services around for employees, so we really are in support of the blight designation so that we have the TIF tool to use to come forward with an actual project for the site. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions for Danae? Okay, seen none. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on Item 5B? Hello, welcome.
Hello, my name's Charlotte Way. I live at 7205 Oxford Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. Less specifically about this particular project and more generally about TIF and Lincoln, it's a subject which I noticed went before the Planning Commission, had no opposition. While that is undoubtedly true about that meeting, I don't think it accurately reflects everyone's point of view about TIF, and I thought this was a good moment to look at this, because the reason you want this to be blighted is so you can qualify for TIF funds, and TIF funds will make the city better, which is a story we have been told time and time again. I'm not going to go into all my disagreements with that particular philosophy, but I do have a couple of specific points. That being this map right here, which is what I have access to as a citizen to tell me what parts of the city have been blighted and qualify for TIF funds. If you notice, it has not been updated since two thousand twelve. I don't think that accurately reflects the amount of TIF projects we have. I think that is just one little thing, so citizens can make better decisions, that maybe we should get that looked at.
Got it.
I also wanted to point out this graphic, which I will leave with counsel, that Nebraska has used this particular TIF tool as much as California. We have as many TIF districts as California. If you look, we have TIF districts everywhere. Is TIF absolutely necessary for development? That is kind of an argument that subtly and more directly made, but if you look down at our friends down in Kansas, they manage to get along with a lot less TIF. I like here better than Kansas, but I also say that the idea that this is a tool that we have to have, that if we don't have that, we're not going to get what we want, is just something I'm not comfortable with. And I have some other people who have said similar things. From a source as radical as Bloomberg dot com, I present to you their thoughts on TIF. The specific question that they bring up that we might want to address, and I'm a little confused on this, is they bring up inflation. If we use a grant a TIF designation for a property, does that property, the amount that they have to pay on the value of the land, everybody here is familiar with the way TIF works, is, does that go up with inflation? Or have we set a situation where we've seen massive inflation in the land value in Lincoln, and yet we still got this huge group of people who have been entering, let's say, a partnership with local government for a common goal, who are operating on different rules? I'm doing most of my time, and nobody wants to hear me talk all that much, so I'll thank you very much for your time. Welcome, councilman. You're my new councilman, and I hope you all have a nice day.
Thank you. Any questions for our testifier? Okay, thank you so much. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item five B?
My name is Ron Brown. I live at fifty-fifty Ellsworth Street in Lincoln. Right now, this farmer that's farming that ground just loves it. All that water is going right into the ground for his crops. You make this in the floodplain, you raise it three feet, all that water's got to go somewhere, so it puts me in the floodplain even longer. Please, the city council has got to get all the property in Lincoln, Nebraska, out of the floodplain. Please.
Anything else? Any questions for Ron? Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item five B? Okay, let's move on to five C.
Item five C is approving the participation provider agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Dental Benefit Providers, Inc., to allow the dental clinic to submit for Medicaid reimbursement of dental services provided for the Medicaid enrolled clients starting January first, twenty twenty-four.
Good afternoon. Gwendy McGinnis, Dental Health and Nutrition Services Manager at the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. Dental Benefit Providers is the dental Medicaid managed care for United Healthcare. This is, again, one of the newly awarded health plans that become effective for Medicaid January one of twenty twenty-four. This contract will allow us to submit for Medicaid reimbursement for the dental services that we are providing in the dental clinic at the Health Department for those participants enrolled in this plan, and the Medicaid fees collected are a part of our council adopted operating budget. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. McGinnis? Councilman?
I just got a comment more than anything else. You run a tight ship on a shoestring budget with great outcomes, so thank you for the good work that you do, and you do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? We're good? Thank you. Let's move on to five D.
Item five D is approving the interlocal agreements between the city of Lincoln and the cities of Bennett, Davie, Denton, Firth, Hallam, Hickman, Malcolm, Raymond, Sprogg, and Waverly for GIS addressing authority.
Good afternoon. I'm Abby Ecker from Information Services, here with Adam Miller, our GIS manager. The item before you today is basically an interlocal agreement between our team and these local Lancaster County villages to do GIS work specifically for nine-one-one addressing. Adam's got a couple more, a little bit more background, so we're happy to answer any questions, too.
Yeah, so I went around to all of the different villages and cities in the county, got them, explained to them kind of the steps for addressing currently in the city and the county. Currently, the city of Lincoln does all addressing for the city proper, the city of Lincoln, and all of the rural areas in the county. And so to kind of bring that under one umbrella and help report that data to the state to prepare for next-gen nine-one-one, we wanted to kind of have, use our resources that we already have to make that a seamless process. And they agreed that that was a good idea, kind of take the work off of their city clerk and put it on people that are ready to do that and do it every day, so.
So, thank you, appreciate it. I'll start with a quick question. So this is basically taking what you do today and expanding it out to the villages and towns around us. So taking that expertise and sharing it with others around us in order to get prepared for next-gen nine-one-one?
Correct, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Councilwoman, yes, please.
I just have one question. I'm going to offer a motion to delay in a moment, but I am curious, since one of the communities was left off of this list here, did you also have a chance to talk with that community as well, and were they supportive of joining the effort?
Which community?
Roka. I don't see Roka on the list.
Yeah, so they agreed and signed the agreement, just, yeah, missed in the opportunity.
I think it was a typo or something, so, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Other questions for staff? Okay, see none. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item five D? Anyone else here to speak on item five D? All right, see none. Let's go ahead and enter into our voting.
We can now vote on these items. Item five A is approving a license agreement between the city and Black Hills Nebraska Gas LLC, doing business as Black Hills Energy for a gas regulating station in Trendwood Park generally located at Seventy-seventh and Davies Drive, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion? All right, see none. Please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five B is miscellaneous two-three-zero-zero-five, application of the Director of Urban Development to declare the Industrial Avenue and Superior Street redevelopment area, generally located at the southwest corner of Industrial Avenue and Superior Street in north-central Lincoln as blighted and substandard, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion?
I just had a question for staff, or maybe Tim or Danae? I, sorry. I think Mr. Brown's concerned, and correct me if I was wrong, that this would put his property in the floodplain, deeper in the floodplain or for a longer period of time. Is that accurate, or is that not accurate?
Yeah, Tim C., Interim Urban Development Director, this will have no impact on, this action will not have any direct impact on the floodplain. But I would recognize that removing property from the floodplain is an expensive and challenging process, and so the availability of, I mean, that's part of what TIF is to be used for, is to assist with those kinds of challenges. So I think this is in furtherance of the goal that Mr. Brown expressed.
So what I'm hearing you say is like this wouldn't affect the properties that are currently in the floodplain, and to lift this out of the floodplain, TIF dollars could be used to help support that goal.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's proceed with the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Upstain.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five C is approving the participating provider agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Dental Benefit Providers, Inc., to allow the dental clinic to submit for Medicaid reimbursement of dental services provided for the Medicaid enrolled clients starting January first, twenty twenty-four, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five D is approving the interlocal agreements between the city of Lincoln and the cities of Bennett, Davie, Denton, Firth, Hallam, Hickman, Malcolm, Raymond, Sprogg, and Waverly for GIS addressing authority, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Shob, Councilwoman Washington, you're recognized.
Just because of the typo, I would like to, that left Roka off the list, I would like to offer a motion to delay for one week with continued public hearing, giving the residents in Roka an opportunity to participate.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson. Let's please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes section five of our agenda. Section six, ordinance's third reading and related resolutions, amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by X, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six B is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by W, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six C is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by E, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six D is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by P, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six C is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by B, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six F is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by A, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six G is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by C. This adjustment is in accordance with the terms of the parties' current bargaining agreement, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six H is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by DSS, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six I is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by M, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six J, street alley vacation two-three-zero-zero-two, application of NEPCO, Inc., to vacate the street right-of-way for Watermark Road from the west line of North Seventieth Street, then west approximately eight-point-one-five-point-twenty-two-two inches, lying adjacent to property generally located approximately point-seven-five miles north of the intersection of North Seventieth Street and Fletcher Avenue, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second. Second, Carlson, discussion? See none. Please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item six K is text amendment two-three-zero-zero-eight to request a family service Lincoln to amend Lincoln Municipal Code, Section two-seven-point-six-three-point-six-ten, Neighborhood Support Services, to remove the condition set forth in sub-paragraph B in order to allow Neighborhood Support Services to be located in any new or existing structures, and to remove the requirement, the structure be adjacent to park, school, place of religious assembly, or neighborhood center, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second.
Second, Shob, discussion? Councilman Bowers?
Living in northeast Lincoln, I know that we often feel our neighborhoods are left behind, and that there's a lack of investment, and that too often we're neglected. And in a lot of ways, this is shown in data available from Place Matters. Our life expectancy rate can be up to twenty years shorter, our kids are less likely to pass fitness tests, we have fewer medical providers, fewer options available for grocery stores and healthy food, and our kids are less likely to graduate from high school. If there are organizations eager to invest in northeast Lincoln, whose goals involve creating safe, secure, supervised spaces for kids, offering help to families in raising children and caring for their elderly parents, addressing accessibility challenges faced by our aging population, and all by bringing services closer to them, and to create a world where living in northeast Lincoln gives people the same opportunities and outcomes as those who live on the south side. I'll support that, especially if it's from longstanding organizations that are overseen by a community board of directors with a strong reputation.
Other comments from the counselors? Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Chairman. I recognize that Neighborhood Support Services have been allowed in neighborhoods for quite some time, since the late sixties and in the late eighties. They were expanded from R-five and eight to R-one and R-four, and the reasons that they were expanded, and it was a long deliberative session at the time, but the reason they were expanded is because of many of the things that my fellow counselor, Councilman Bowers, has already stated. But they recognize the need to bring support services close to a neighborhood, to serve the residents of that neighborhood. This is not a citywide service center. This is a service center that is being based in a neighborhood, close to the folks who may need those services. It is certainly a difficult thing to have change happen, and this is one of those difficult places, and I listen and... And I listen to all of the statements that were made and all of the information the folks brought forward, and I believe that we have the utility services we need for wastewater. I understand that it's in a floodplain, but we're not saying that there can't be development in floodplains, we're saying that things have to be taken into consideration for floodplains, and I believe this project is doing that, and Watershed intends to work with the family services of Lincoln to make certain that no additional harm happens to the neighborhood because of a new development. None of those rules have changed, they're in place for everyone, we're not supposed to shove more water onto our neighbor's property, and I don't believe this project will do so. I also think the benefits of having community gardens close at hand and having affordable housing, more units of affordable housing outweighs many, many of the concerns that other folks have said, at least in my mind. We have a huge shortage of affordable housing, and to get 10 more units in a section of town that really needs them, it checks all boxes for me. So I'll be supporting this project.
Other comments from councillors? Yes, Councilman Duden?
One thing I will, would like, would like to say is that I think it's an app, you know, an important project for northeast Lincoln. I just don't think this is the right location for that project. I think it's a great site for, for housing in that particular area, but in previous councils, they had required for zoning purposes that it's such a facility be adjacent to a park or a school, and with a park a block and a half away, with some empty lots available, that sort of thing, I'm just not sure that this is the right location for the facility and the services that may need to be provided in that particular area. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Anyone else who would like to make any comments? All right, seen that, let's please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 6L is special permit 23021, appeal by Jessica Lehman, no planning commission approval of special permit 23021, to allow for a community unit plan to develop dwelling units and a neighborhood support services center and a community garden with associated waivers on the property generally located at the northwest corner of North 52nd and Holdridge Streets, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington. Yes, Councilman.
My comments on the past were about the text amendment, I just have a few comments about the project itself, which is what we're voting on now. I'm going to echo some of the comments that I've made in the past. During my time as a lifelong Lincolnite, a social worker in northeast Lincoln, and serving northeast Lincoln in this capacity for five years now, a reoccurring thing that keeps coming up is the limited opportunities and resources available, particularly for children. And the second theme was the fact that northeast Lincoln gets left behind, and there's no investment and a lack of resources. It's imperative that we prioritize the establishment of safe, supervised, and educational spaces for children, if we are to provide them with more opportunities, an issue that we must address as a city. For as long as I can remember, this lot has remained vacant and neglected. The trees and vegetation have become overgrown, transforming it into a potential breeding ground for rodents, in an unslightly blemish in northeast Lincoln. By revitalizing and investing in this neglected city block, and this investment in northeast Lincoln, we can bring some dignity to this property with a proven Lincoln neighbor, not an out-of-state landlord. A development is going to go in here. Someone's going to buy this, and someone's going to put units in there. By right, a person can put at least 12 units without any public process, any community input, and without providing any supportive services to the neighborhood. I've heard the concerns from neighbors about other landlords in our community, and they're worried that the same thing will happen and occur at 52nd and Holdridge. The reality is that landlords do not have to be a contact for neighbors or invest in the community around them. Several examples have been shared from residents that include that landlords are not accessible, that they don't take care of the property, that they have no vested interest in making sure that the surrounding area is safe, secure, and clean, and that they don't care about the community. However, Family Service is a stark, or is a stark contrast to that. It's a longstanding and trusted agency in Lincoln, and it stands apart in their 130-year history and a reputation. They're governed not only by a dedicated, long-term staff, but also by a community board of directors. They depend on having good community engagement to stay in business, they're offering a number for contact, they're providing support for parents while school is out, and providing educational opportunities for children. It would be clear, if it is not Family Service, Services, it will be a private developer that will buy this land and develop it, without any public process, without any responsibility to provide neighbors with oversight of the grounds or the residence, and focused more on profit instead of community service in northeast Lincoln.
Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on that? On the special permit that we have in front of us? Okay. I believe that we have a motion to amend. Councilwoman Washington, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to offer a motion to amend this application. The reason for the requ, oh, first, I'll wait for a second?
Second.
Thank you. The reason for the request is to include the 15-yard setback along North 51st Street as was originally requested by the applicant. This is supported by city staff and the applicant themselves, and so that would reinstate the 15-foot setback.
All right, very good. Just to clarify, in your comments, you originally stated 15 yards, but then you clarified 15 feet? Just wanted to make sure that your intent was 15 feet.
It's 15 feet, pardon me.
Okay, very good.